It's been deferred. So, I'm sure you all want to stay anyways, but... Oh yeah, you're still welcome to speak to it if you want to, but it has been deferred to the next meeting. Alright, I'm going to call this meeting to order, a regular meeting of council for Monday, October 27th at 7:05 PM. Looking for approval of the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? To public participation, this is your opportunity as public to speak on any matters pertaining to Callwood. So, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne McNeil, 487 Sumar Place, and I want to speak to the issue that's on the agenda tonight from the District of North Sanage in regards to letters of support for a farm trust. As it is now, we already have a CRD trust fund buying parkland. We have the land management, just ALR, that's right, already dictating the disposition of farmland. And I think to have another taxpayer-funded trust fund buy more land would be irresponsible of governments in this area. Furthermore, when I read the letter, it seems to state that a trust fund would be meeting the needs of North Sanage, as it clearly states in there, and I believe that it would be wrong to support this type of function. Thank you.
Anyone else? There you go. This is your one opportunity, so... Going twice, three times. Alright, thank you guys. Mayor's message, I'm not the mayor, but I'm acting today. So, first of all, there is both our mayor, Hamilton, and our councillor Sullivan had some personal matters and are deeply regretful that they're not able to be here this evening, and they do ask me to share that with them. They just have some personal matters. And I have several announcements just to make. A reminder that on Monday, November 3rd, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM, there is an informal gathering of all the candidates, sort of a meet and greet that the city is hosting here at the city, and so encourage candidates plus any public to please attend. On Tuesday, November 4th, there is a candidates, all candidates meeting, happening from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM at the Pentecostal Church at Suk Road, and would encourage everyone to attend that as well. Wanted to just draw your attention to, in the weekend paper, this isn't new news, but it's fairly significant, I think. In the Friday/Saturday paper, there was a 2014 CARE Awards, which is the construction awards, and quite thrilled that Callwood did very, very well in this. We won subdivision of the year. We won the home, I'm sorry, I'm just going to pull it up real quick. We ran home for, I think it was 2,000 to 2,500 square feet, for 2,500 to 3,000 square feet. We also won best, yeah, excuse me, best single-family detached spec home between 2,000 and 2,500, under 2,000, best subdivision. We also won best commercial project, which was the Metropolitan Capital Partners. And we came silver for the best interior commercial over 2,500 square feet. And also, there was a lifetime achievement award that was given to Gordon English, who is a Callwood resident. So that was also, and then the better skills, excuse me, building better futures community award was provided to a Callwood company, Metropolitan Capital Partners. So, significant, and that's really quite exciting that we've got a lot of good things happening here in Callwood. Sunday, November 2nd, we've got our first annual Pump &amp; Walk, which is happening on Veterans Parkway. And this is sort of an all-day event, but from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, we are, they're serving at the Red Barn Market, healthy snacks, which, so, I won't go to that, but... I'll go, I'll go, I'll go look at the pumpkins at least. So, please, please attend that. That should be a lot of fun. We're actually hoping to sort of really get that going. Yeah, that's from 3 to 4, but it's sort of an all-day event that you can go down and look at the pumpkins. Wednesday, October 29th, at 9:45 AM at Callwood Creek Park, we are having a trees for tomorrow planting. So we have 500 trees that we're going to be planting at the park. Belmont High School students are going to be coming out, as well as the Greater Victoria Green team, and they're sort of organizing all the volunteers. So, anyone from Callwood is welcome to come on out and plant a tree, and that has been graciously donated from a grant from the provincial government. Friday, October 31st, is Halloween, obviously, but a reminder that we have the bonfire happening down the Callwood Fire Department, and that's from 6:30 on, and hot dogs, and hot chocolate, and all sorts of unhealthy things, so I will be there for that one. Yes, just before that, November 5th is a reminder that there is voting day happening here at the city from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, November 5th, the 12th, and then actual election day is November 15th. 1:00 PM this Friday, we also have the flag raising ceremony for the Poppy Campaign here at the city, so would encourage everyone to attend that. And in relation to that, there's one thing that I would just like to read to you from the city. "And tonight, we would also like to honor the memory of two Canadian soldiers who died in the service of their country. Our thoughts and prayers are with their families and friends of Warren Officer Patrice Vincent and Corporal Nathan Cirillo. In honor of all the fallen soldiers and all our military and civilian personnel, I ask each one of us to please stand for a moment of silence." Thank you. Moving on, I would like to, looking for adoption of minutes of regular meeting of October 14th and October 22nd.
Ms. Adoption?
Second.
Thank you. Any errors or missions? Seeing done, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Looking for motion to receive the inter-municipal advisory committee meeting on disability issues of April 17th and the planning and land use committee of October 7th. Move receipt?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, errors? Seeing done, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Moving on to 5.1 PowerPoint presentation. You guys are up.
Hello, thank you. We're going to go to the, use the emergency backup PowerPoint presentation here. Oh, it does. We can do it over here. So we'll go back over here. How does that sound? How does that sound better? Right there. Okay. Okay. So this is a presentation on the Victoria Regional Transit System winter service changes. So the objective is to come here and talk to you about the transit service plan that we're looking at for December 29th, but also to have a bit of a discussion about the transit service priorities in the West Shore in general. So what types of expansion should we be looking at over the next three to seven years? Just to give you a little bit of background information on the existing system, right now, we carry about 100,000 people per day, and we do that, that's a 6.5% mode share of all trips that are, that occur in the region every day. And we do this with about 281 buses and 800, over 800,000 service hours. We have 55 routes in the transit system and over 2,300 transit stops. Now, the Victoria regional system, when you compare it to other communities of similar size, it performs really well in terms of ridership. However, we still do have our challenges, which include traffic congestion that we see on Highway 1, passenger pass-up, so university kids trying to get to, get to college. And there's some areas of the community that we don't have transit service in right now, or very low levels of transit service. So it's trying to balance all these challenges and do the best we can with the resources that we have. We do have a transit future plan, which is a long-term transit strategy for the region. We did develop this with community input. We also looked at all the official community plans, the regional growth strategy, to develop a network for the future. Now, in the future, we're not just looking at regular bus service, but trying to develop rapid transit, frequent transit corridors, local transit corridors to serve communities, and also some targeted services. So, in the future, we're trying to get to, develop a grid of frequent transit corridors, which include rapid transit out to the West Shore, to Uvic on Mackenzie, out to the ferry terminals. Now, in the West Shore, we're looking at a few frequent transit lines to start, which include out to Machosen Road to serve the new Royal Bay development, development nodes such as around La Toria Walk, making sure that the Hatley Park area, there are all these areas, Callwood Corners are all connected into a regional transit network. And we're also looking at, again, at rapid transit along Goldstream Avenue. We'd have exchanges and park and rides there in the future. And then the rest of the network, which we don't show from a strategic point of view, is the community bus network or local trans network where we have smaller buses that are appropriate for the community to take people down to their community center, like the bus that we have up on Triangle. And when we're doing this, we're also looking at community plans, so looking at the Callwood master transportation that you guys are working on right now. We've participated in that, in that plan with staff, and it identifies strategic things that we should be looking at for the transit network too, such as making the transit services more attractive, looking at some of our transit facilities, such as, in the future, we're going to need a transit terminal out at Royal Bay. Also, making sure that we have transit priority in the places that we needed to get transit moving fast, get it out of the congestion, and looking at other ways to improve the transit experience, such as a transit trip planner, or better bus stop signage, or in fact, real-time information in the future. So all of these things are coming together to help us make decisions for today. And so, on December 29th, we have a few quick wins that we'd be happy to talk about tonight, which include expanded commuter service on La Toria and Happy Valley, better evening and weekend service on Triangle Mountain, and new local bus service to Bear Mountain and West Hills. And so, yeah, again, it's the transit future plan that's telling us to do this. It's your transportation plan. It's, and then it all comes into an annual service plan that we're trying to implement this year. And I should mention, one of the other quick wins that we've recently had is we were able to add late-night service on the Route 50, which is the bus that serves Callwood Corners and down Goldstream. So now people can, if you need to go out and party on a Friday night, you can maybe go all the way till 1:30 at night and get back by transit. And as part of this, we've developed some draft schedules that in, earlier in September, we took out right to our riders on the community bus routes to ask them what they thought of the new, the new routes and the new schedules. And we talked to over 550 people as part of this survey. And for the most part, the, this box here describes the route and what people thought of the new, the new schedules. For the most part, they were well-received on the routes out here, but there were a few adjustments that people, people asked us to make, such as later evening service in Machosen, or making sure that the connections work for people to get to school. So the first, the first change is, right now, we have a commuter route that goes downtown, and we call it the 52. And it, it starts at the Langford Transit Exchange and comes down Veterans Memorial and goes on to Caerndale or Stornaway through Dressler and Ben Homer. But now we're extending this route further out, out La Toria and Happy Valley Road, because there's a lot of change that's happened in that area recently with, you know, for example, La Toria Walk. So this is a new route that runs two trips in the morning and two trips in the afternoon to help people get to downtown Victoria. I think people will like this change. And we've also taken the Route 52, which is your local community bus route, which starts at the Wanda Fuka Rec Center today, and it goes through Machosen Road and back through Dressler to the Langford Exchange. And we've improved the frequency on it, and are also extending it up into the shopping area around Millstream, the Millstream area, and up to Bear Mountain. So, it should be a pretty good improvement. The buses will run about every 20 minutes at peak times, and at 60 minutes at the off-peak times during the day, and runs from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Now, there are some areas you can see in dashed, and those areas are limited service areas. We'll talk a bit more about that why as we move through this. But other changes include new schedules for all of the community bus routes out here. Triangle Mountain, as I mentioned, is a big change where they didn't have evening service before, and the weekend service levels weren't that great. They've got a lot more service now to take them to and from the exchange at Langford. There's also some other services that connect in West Hills to the transit network. They didn't have any service before. And as part of this, we'd like to look at, right now, we call the exchange at the Wanda Fuka Rec Center, the Western Exchange. I think it's a holdover from the 70s where, at one point, that was getting close to the endpoint of the transit system then. And it, we'd like to rebrand it and call it the Callwood Transit Exchange. We think that makes more sense and is logical for people to know where it is and where they're going when they go here. And now, this gets us into future priorities. So, the changes that I just showed you were what we were doing, we're planning for this December 29th, but we're also developing a West Shore Transit Area Plan, which kind of dovetails with the master transportation plan. We're identifying what the priorities for future investment are over the next few years. We want to make some big investments in service on the 50, which is the main route into town. We're also looking at investing in bus lanes on Douglas Street, Highway 1, and the Island Highway to help improve transit travel times. And we'd also like to invest in park and ride capacity, because right now, as many of you may know, the park and rides are pretty full over here. Now, this shows the Route 52, which I showed you earlier, it's starting to evolve over time with development in Royal Bay. And in September, we're looking at adding some specific school trips that will be aligned with the school bell times for when the Royal Bay and Belmont schools come online. So we do, we are thinking about that, and we'll have it covered. We're going to work with your staff to identify where the stops go to make sure that the service will work when the schools are opening up. And in the future, the long-term plan is to create this route and turn it into a frequent transit corridor. And so we will, we're going to extend the Route 52 all the way to Royal Bay, and other local routes will, will come to key points or transit hubs in Royal Bay, in Callwood Corners, or in Langford, and connect into the major routes. We're also looking at possibly, a possible park and ride in Royal Bay as an interim measure as the community starts to develop. Another priority that we're looking at for the future is a better West Shore Dockyard route. Right now, we have, we have a service on the Route 25 that goes from Wanda Fuka to, to the, to Dockyard, but it's buried in a, in a not very frequent route. We'd like it to be its own separate route and connect from Esquimalt all the way out to the Langford Exchange. And we'd have service on Kelly Road, which kind of aligns with some improvements you're looking at on that street for transit. It will give the people in that neighborhood a great connection into, into the transit network. We're also looking at a better West Shore interurban Uvic route. So we will take the existing Route 39, which kind of ends at Royal Roads now, and have it continue on through Kelly to, to the exchange in Langford, and make investments in service over time. This also connects you with the hospital, which I think is an important transit connection that we should be looking at. We're also looking at a new community bus route in the future that serves this new development area on La Toria and Happy Valley Road. It would probably connect into the Royal Bay area and to that transit terminal. And other priorities include investments in transit priority. We did a study in 2013 to look at a northbound bus lane on the Island Highway to help us begin to develop this as a rapid transit corridor, connecting Callwood Corners into the transit priority on Highway 1 in the future. Right now, we run about 24 buses in the peak hour in the morning into town that go along this route, so it is worth looking at this as an investment in the future, in the near future. This, this picture I have here is a picture of one of our rapid bus stops in Kelowna. It's hard to see, but hanging off the shelter there is a, is a real-time display unit. That's something we'd like to look at too in the future. So we are making investments in transit priority right now. We've done the first phase of bus lanes on Douglas Street. We're looking at a second phase, which is a northbound lane from Hillside to Tolme, which should be complete in early 2015. We'd like to look at, at other quarters, and Callwood Corners is on that priority list. I mean, having one from Callwood Corners on the Island Highway is, is on that list, and we'd like to look at that with, with the city at some point in the near future. And again, we need more park and ride space, and we need to consider looking at a relocation of the Callwood Exchange, possibly to, if there's development occurring at Callwood Corners, it would really make sense to have the exchange located in the town center. And developing more rapid bus stations, so looking on the Island Highway, where are the places that we, we want to identify as, as rapid transit stations in the future, and continuing making the investments that we have in bus shelters. And other initiatives that we are working on right now is, we want to improve the service branding. So we're looking at starting to call our, our different types of services rapid and frequent, and have maps that correspond with that. And we're also have just introduced a new trip planner on our website, so if any of you want to take a look, we have the trip planner up and running right now. It's in, it's right in the testing phase. We're asking people to go on and give it a try, and tell us if there's anything we can do to improve it. And one of the other things that we are looking at in the future is, is we've only got room for 12 more buses at our two operating centers, so we'll need to make an investment in a new operations and maintenance center sometime in the next few years. new operations and maintenance centre sometime in the next few years. And so, again, the next step are to hear what your priorities are, and working with staff to make sure that we have those in our plans, and looking at the steps to look at implementing some of these infrastructure priorities. We're going to communicate these winter service changes for December 29th, coming up in the next few weeks, to let people know about them, and make that change then. And also, look at finalizing and developing a west shore transit area plan. So thank you all. I'm ready to take any questions.
I will look to council. Any questions? councillor Day, and then.
Thanks. I just have to pass along from Lorraine. She was not able to be here tonight, and she said to tell you that there were no buses that would bring her here or take her home from tonight's meeting. And she also wanted me to talk to you about the lack of service on Suk Road and Kelly Road. For those of you who don't know Lorraine, she is our Accessible Transit Advisory Committee member, and a member of the Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues, and a great advocate for transit in our community, what works and what doesn't. And I would just like to get some clarity. A lot of the improvements that you mentioned are actually in Langford, and it seems like the bus routes are going along Veterans Memorial Parkway, and thereby bypassing quite a lot of the more heavily developed areas of Callwood. And I'm just wondering, for those routes that are shown with the dotted lines or the limited service, are they always going to be there? Are they going to be changed around?
So right now, there are a couple of locations here in limited service. And when we're thinking about the Transit Future Network, we're looking at connecting in with Royal Bay. And so, at some point in the future, the lagoon area may be on another local route that connects into these. So it may not run every 15 minutes all day long, but we're going to make sure that the lagoon area has a really good level of service appropriate for the development there. Right now, with these changes, they'll have 20, 25 minute service at peak times, an hourly service through the middle of the day, and into the evening until about 10 o'clock at night. So they will still have a very good level of service, they just won't have the same level of service as Machosen Road, or La Torre would in the future.
And what about Suk Road?
Suk Road, Suk Road between Machosen and Goldstream would be a frequent level of service. And Suk Road west of Machosen would probably have a similar service level as it would today, unless there was demand to make, you know, add a couple of extra trips at certain times of the day.
So currently, there's not regular service on Suk Road between Machosen and Goldstream? Is there any changes to that?
Right now, there is. At peak times, there's a 10-minute service, but in the middle of the day, there's almost no service. We did run a route that went through that area in the middle of the day a few years ago, and the ridership levels were so poor that we discontinued it and used the resources for it to put it into other services out here. That's one of the challenges, is the amount of resources that we have and making the best use of it that we can. You know, I agree with you councillor Day, that I'd like to have more service on that part of Suk Road. And if we're able to get more service approved, this is one of the areas we'll look at in the context of all the other priorities that we're trying to invest in out here.
Councillor Cullington?
Thank you, your worship. I thought you'd enjoy that one. Thanks, James. It's really nice to see the improvements in service, and I know that you've been working really hard with staff, so it's kind of nice to see that collaboration and trying to get something that works as well as it can for our community. And I like the fact that we're moving to the Woods, the Callwood Exchange. I like the fact that you're thinking about bringing the schools online, so that we've got service there from day one. Couple of questions and comments. So the 48 downtown replaces what's currently the 52 downtown?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's just a simple, straightforward piece. You talked about investing in park and ride facilities. Can you expand on that a bit, please?
So right now, we have a park and ride at the Wandaferca Recreation Centre, and if you take a look, it's full all the time. So one of the things we do need to do is identify a park and ride. And there's a couple of options that we're looking at with the Ministry of Transportation further down. And there could be opportunities that we may be able to get through development in the future out here, if there's something available at one of the developments. But we'd have to work with staff on that, to look at what the opportunities might be.
Okay. Thank you. One minor but important thing. On your map, and an example is the one where you've got the 48 Happy Valley, you show the road running between Ben Homer and Machosen as perimeter. It's actually Painter Road?
That's interesting, yes. I know it's Painter Road.
So if you talk nicely to your map people, maybe we can get that corrected, just so we don't get anybody confused.
Thank you so much.
Couple of pieces that I'm going to continue to push for, you're going to tell me there's not enough service demand there for a moment. Fort Rod Hill is a big destination in our community. It's a place that people cannot get to by bus. And I would love to see, added to your list of places to go down the road, is to get that connection in there. And the other piece of it is connection down to the lagoon, because it is an incredibly popular place for families to go, and not everybody has a car, and if there are ways of getting down there. You can do it in part going down on the lagoon side, but your dotted line says to me it's not going to be quite such a frequent service, which is a concern. Interestingly, earlier, I guess, or part of last week, we were looking at a, or looking at a development that's going ahead in that area, which will see over time, significant uplift in number of people living there. And I think it's really important to keep our eye on providing good service down to that area, although it's distance-wise, not terribly far to the frequent network up on Machosen Road. It's up a hill, and that makes it tougher for a lot of people. So if there's a local service that connects into it, I think that's an important thing to keep our eyes on. Connection out to Camosan, both interurban and Lansdowne Campus, and also UVIC. Again, I'm going to say that's really important for west shore communities. We have too many kids out here who buy a car to go to school, because the transit service isn't frequent and friendly enough. I'd love to find a way of getting everybody using the buses, because that's an easier way to go. I love where you're trying to go with the whole website piece, and I'm looking forward to it working. I'm always struck when I go into another community, and I can use the buses without knowing where I'm going. And I think it's something I don't do here. The buses that I do use, I know where I'm going, I know where to get on, I know where to get off, and it works. But if I'm going to a different part of town, I still find it very difficult to kind of, it's not intuitive in terms of, you know, which buses or bus or buses I should take, how I make it work. So anything you can do to make it really easy for, you know, think about somebody who's a visitor to this community, how do they get around? And things like, you know, I know when I go to Vancouver, and there are those wonderful signs which says the next bus, you know, the number nine bus is arriving in 10 minutes, and the number 23 is arriving in two minutes, or whatever it is. That's really helpful. I know it all costs money, but I think it is, the more friendly we make our bus system, the more people are likely to use it. Having said that, I was going to compliment you. I took the bus downtown to an event, and I was going against rush hour traffic, and the bus was full, and even coming home, sort of middle of the evening, the bus was quite well-used. So clearly, we're getting lots of people using the transit system out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo councillor Cullington's comments regarding how thankful we are for the collaboration that's been going on with staff in our transportation master plan. So we're not, no organisation is working in isolation, which I think is right on. So my comments, or question, I guess, has to do specifically with the rapid transit line. And to me, I think Callwood's necessarily the issue in terms of location, but the Trans Canada Highway is the major bottleneck. And so, I know the province has always been slow, or at least have, happened slow in their messaging anyways, in terms of getting on board with any infrastructure funding and being a willing partner in providing some funding to make that happen. So has that changed at all, or has there been progress with the province to have some dedicated rapid transit lanes along that stretch of road?
So we are making progress with the City of Victoria, where we actually are going to have them implemented to Tullme later, in early this year. And we are in a technical study with the Ministry of Transportation on Highway 1, looking at how we can get bus-on-shoulder lanes along the highway, but it hasn't advanced past that yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, James. I know you've been out a couple of times in the past year or two, share information with us. I have had a rather positive experience the last three and a half to four months with bus service. I did have an international student here, who was going to school downtown. And she did use the trip planner, and it did tell her what bus to take and where to walk, and which bus to get on, and what time that bus was coming. So she found it very functional, did not have a problem getting from downtown to back or to Langford. The one clarification, and it will help, and you've talked about it, is changing the Western Exchange to Callwood Exchange, because a couple of times, she got on the wrong bus and ended up in the Langford Exchange, not knowing. So that clarification will be great. I echo councillor Cullington's comments, and she stole my thunder with respect to seasonal service to Fort Rod Hill. I was cycling, you'd be so proud of me, this, up Lagoon Road, or Ocean Boulevard, to pass Fort Rod Hill. And there was an elderly couple, probably in their 80s, that had taken the bus to the exchange, Western Exchange, and walked, and were walking to Fort Rod Hill. And they were at the top of the hill when you turn off of the first part of Ocean Boulevard and you turn left, before going up to Belmont. And I happened to pass them, and they stopped me and asked me how much further to Fort Rod Hill. So I think it would be in our best interests, through the summer months, to try and do something with Fort Rod Hill and also the Esquimalt Lagoon. I mean, it just makes sense, May through September, whatever it may be, it doesn't have to be full term. But, you know, it's a huge, you know, historical site, people want to see it. They're doing some creative things there. I think you could work very well with the staff there, they're interested, I have talked to them about it. So I would encourage you to do that, and also tie into the lagoon. Again, easy for people to get down there. And sometimes, the parking is a premium down there in the summer, they're parking on both sides of the road, and it's very, you know how narrow that is. So, yeah, those are my comments. But thank you, I appreciate your efforts.
Thanks. Just a couple things. I love the real-time display, but I'm in Vancouver, and they had them on Oak and on Granville, and they've been turned off for like, the last year. And I'm not sure what the problem is that they're having with it, but I would hate for us to spend a whole bunch of money if there's just a whole bunch of glitches, or they're not, buses aren't actually arriving when they're supposed to be showing up. So I also am chair of West Shore Park and Rec, and so you mentioning about the park and ride across from West Shore Park and Rec has always been a problem, because we do have parking on the other side. However, one of the things that we're trying to do is encourage people to, we don't have a problem with people parking down by the queue centre. So if you go down the hill, we have a whole bunch of parking there that we're trying to encourage people to use as a secondary parking situation, as a park and ride. The issue that we constantly are hearing, though, is that it's a hill to get back up, so people don't want to walk it. So I would hope that you would possibly reach out to West Shore Park and Rec to see if maybe we can bring a bus down there, at least during the rush hours. Let people park down there and then just bring them up to the park and ride. And that might be an easy solution, where it's not costing us anything, other than running a bus down there once in a while. This is my own pet peeve, or not pet peeve, but pet project, but I just keep saying it every time. I still believe that we could put rails on some of the buses, and then just, like the rail cars, just like you see in the interior, where you drop a vehicle onto the rail and just run it. And I'm not sure why we haven't looked at dropping those rails, running the bus just one way into town during rush hour, have them come back against rush hour, where you're not fighting traffic, and then drop it on, and then you reverse it, go in the opposite way. You, it would seem to be like, that would be a good opportunity for us to utilise that rail service, and I don't know how expensive it is to fit a bus where you have both wheels and rail wheels. But I see them all the time, I see these trucks in the interior where they're fixing the rails on it, so I know it's done. And last thing, and this is just the one sad, well, maybe it's not sad. Both my children attend Camosan, and during rush hour in the mornings, so for example, if they have an 8:00 AM class, it's taking them an hour and a half to get to Lansdowne. So they ended up moving, which I like to thank you for. So, but the issue is, the issue is you get, they're leaving Callwood. And the sad thing is, the sad thing is, my son actually goes to interurban, and when he was living downtown, he was faster for him to go from downtown to interurban than it was to go from here to interurban. And I understand that that's not all your fault, because it's rush hour traffic and stuff. But it is a discouraging thing that we're losing the youth out here, especially the educated youth who want to go to school. So, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I'll put Suk Road on our list, and summer fund down to Fort Rod Hill. I'll check with Emmett and Michael about driving a bus over the bridge.
You know what? Just this morning, I saw one of the small transit buses going down Ocean Boulevard and across the bridge. So I don't know if they screwed up, or what the scoop is, but they were going down there, so.
I'd like them to be very careful about that.
I didn't say that out loud.
Thank you for your time and questions and thoughts.
We're going to move on. 6.1, letter, City of Nanaimo. This is a letter from John Rutten of the City of Nanaimo, and he's written to the 25 Vancouver Island communities requesting a letter of support for an island ferry service. This is a proposed high-speed passenger-only ferry that would operate between downtown Nanaimo and downtown Vancouver. Nanaimo believes that this convenient harbour-to-harbour ferry service will provide mid-island and Vancouver residents with a valuable transportation alternative, bringing consistent economic benefit to the island and to lower mainland. Nanaimo has basically been in regular discussions with the federal and provincial governments, urging that they financially support this. The mayor of Nanaimo has requested assistance with this effort by way of a letter of support for this service, and the benefit extends to everyone. So looking for discussion or a motion. Councillor Day?
Sorry, just on the discussion part, I had to think about this one long and hard to see the relevance for us, because, you know, there is a ferry service, it's not a high-speed service, but you can take vehicles or passengers from Schwartz Bay and Departure Bay. And so, I was thinking hard about what the impact would be to the city of Callwood, and I think it's fairly minimal, the impact, although it is sometimes quicker for access to medical services, which might be an advantage to people living in Callwood. So I thought I would put that out for council to consider. I know a member of my family has to commute to Children's Hospital in Vancouver, and that can be a very arduous trip for them. So this might provide a service that could be affordable, and shorten up what is often a very, very long day by the time they've got to. and shorten up what is often a very, very long day by the time they've got to Vancouver, had a day of treatment, and come home again.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion of some sort from someone? Move receipt, Mr. Chair. All right, thank you. May I have a second or?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 6.2, which is a letter from North Sanich, a letter from the District of North Sanich regarding a regional farm trust and farmland acquisition fund. The district's full staff report on this issue was included with the letter for council's information. Basically, a summary in conclusion of the direct, District Staff Report states as follows. "With the continued presence of farmland within the CRD, a regional farmland trust and acquisition fund would be a valid, valid option to preserve farmlands, increase the economic viability of farming, and increase the availability of local grown food items and food products. Thrust the Agricultural Advisory Commission and staff support this concept of a regional farm trust." We basically have three options. We can propose the motion if there's no action, or postpone, excuse me. We can also support it, but ask for community consultation first, or we can just support it in general. So those are just some opportunities or options. But I'll put it on the table for discussion. Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. It's one that at first blush doesn't affect Colwood, but actually it does, because I think local food affects all of us. And I think it's really important in this region that we take steps to protect and enhance our foodlands. I mean, I'm always struck by the fact that in Colwood, our only agricultural land, reserved land, is the Royal Colwood Golf Course. So it's not exactly highly productive from a, a food point of view. Having said that, I share Mr. McNeil's comments about, I don't think this fits within any existing service that the CRD has, nor would I necessarily want to, to see a sort of, create this as, as kind of another piece of bureaucracy. So I'm kind of coming nicely down the, down the middle on this one, in that I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to do something that's setting up another CRD service. But I certainly do think it's important that we have a regional conversation around the importance of, of farmland and, and foodlands. So I'm not, the, the recommendation that they, they put in front of us, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, but I, I do support the general concept.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree. But I think the other focus should be on how we actually make it attractive to farm, and make it financially viable. You know, CRD water, through your water bill, actually subsidizes the agricultural rate to a tune of almost a million bucks. You know, so looking at strategies to make it more worthwhile for a farmer to, and cost-effective, to get a, a head of lettuce to the table, to make it more attractive for the buyer, you know, I think, or the consumer, rather, should, should be one of the prime focuses. But, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
Thanks. And I quite concur with the comments that I've heard earlier. Only difference I would, I would make is there are some areas on the island that are doing a very good job of promoting their local agriculture. The Comox Valley is one. They have a very robust and well-developed agricultural support program that includes everything from checking in with farms who, who are at risk of selling out to developers, and suggesting other farming means or other crops that, that might be suitable to farm that are less labor-intensive. So where someone's prepared to give up on a dairy farming business, they might be more interested in a wine, wine built, building a vineyard business. So there's been quite a, a switch in some of the focus on some of their farmlands, which has allowed them to retain them as farmlands, which could, of course, grow food at any time. But there's also a larger conversation about our food sustainability and our emergency preparedness. And if there were to be an interruption, long-term, for ferry service off the island, we know that there's a very short time that food will be on the shelves here for, because we have so much produced off-island and so little produced on the island. So there's a lot of work that could be done to support agriculture in and around the Capital Regional District. And I don't see any terms associated with this fund, so I wouldn't want to send a letter supporting a fund that I don't know anything about. But I would certainly be willing to support agriculture and local agriculture.
Great, thank you. Do I have any motion? Counselor Cullington?
Let me have a crack at this. I would move that the city send a letter to North Sanich, noting the importance of foodlands and supporting the principle of a regional approach to preserving farmland, but noting that the city does not believe this is a CRD responsibility.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? 6.3, I think? Is that where we're at? Yeah, 6.3. This is a letter from the Nanaimo Regional District, reaffirming support for the Metro Vancouver Proposed Recycling Materials Regulation Bylaw, number 280. Basically, Nanaimo Regional District is encouraging members of the Association of Vancouver Island and coastal communities to send letters of support to the province for Metro Vancouver's proposed bylaw, 280, to the province. On October 17, 2014, Civic Info distributed a press release advising that the province will review Metro Vancouver's, Vancouver's solid waste management plan to determine the most effective way to achieve waste diversion in the region. The press release noted that the province will review Metro Vancouver's solid waste management plan to determine the most effective way to achieve waste diversion in the region. Minister Pollack, as the statutory decision-maker, has decided not to approve bylaw 280, citing in her decision letter to the Metro Vancouver Board that she has a number of public interest concerns that factor into this decision. A three-month review will be undertaken, focusing on the multifamily and industrial-commercial institutional waste streams, with a finding and advice being reported to the Environment Minister. Looking for discussion or a motion? Yep, Counselor Cullington?
Sorry, me again. I would move that we receive this, and if there's a second or I'll speak to why.
Second.
This is, the city has, doesn't have a direct role in the solid waste management. That's something that we devolve out to the CRD. It's something that has been a discussion at the CRD table, and I think this is a tip of a much larger iceberg. So I think for myself, I'm comfortable devolving that discussion up to the CRD level.
Okay. Any other?
I would just concur in that, in, I did attend a solid waste management meeting at the CRD about a year ago, looking at some of these implications. And it certainly is a very large issue. And it, it does definitely, it's something that we have to, to deal with regionally, and not at, at the Colwood level.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. New Business Planning and Land Use Committee, Development Variants, DVP 140111.
Thank you, Your Worship. This application is requesting to vary Section 12B2 of the signed bylaw number 60, increasing the maximum allowable sign area requirement from a multi-sided freestanding sign from 15 meters squared to 32.5 meters squared, and the maximum allowable height requirement for a freestanding sign from six meters to seven dot six meters in order to permit the erection of a new multi-sided freestanding sign structure for an existing commercial property. The Director of Planning said that the OCP signage design guidelines are a critical aspect of improving the quality of place within the city center area, and informed members that staff do not support the applicant's request because the proposed signage does not meet the intent of the OCP design guidelines with regard to the height, size of the sign structure, and the illumination. The business owners did speak, and their request has been made as a result of their tenants calling for their businesses to be easily identifiable to vehicle traffic along the traffic corridor on Sook Road. They added that the location is unique and challenging because of a crest on the hill approaching from the south, and the sharp curve in the road approaching from the west, all which exit or enter the busy intersection. The current sign is over 30 years old, with only enough advertising space for about nine of the 10 businesses located in the center, and did verify that there's a few more businesses within the center that cannot advertise on the sign at this point in time. There was a resident from the community that did speak, that used to have his business in this building, and said that he moved his business simply because of the lack of ability for advertising and access. The sign contractor was also here and spoke and confirmed that the sign, the new sign, is designed to match the professional building. It's aesthetically appealing and functional, and has enough advertising space for all of the businesses. The sign will be located in the same location as the current sign. It's 25 feet tall with a 73-inch between post-base width compared to the existing sign, which is 20.6 feet tall with a 73-inch between post-base width. The members expressed support for the application and proposed the sign, and it was recommended to council. And I so move that Development Variants Permit, number DVP 14-001, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the maximum allowable sign area requirement for a multi-sided freestanding sign pursuant to Section 12B2 of the signed bylaw number 60, from 15 meters squared to 32.5 meters squared, and the maximum allowable height requirement for a freestanding sign pursuant to Sections 12B3 of the signed bylaw number 60, from six meters to seven dot six meters. On the property described as Lot A, Section 1, Esquimalt District Plan 1910, Sook Road, subject to the condition that the applicants work with staff to ensure that the background lighting design is opaque.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll go to our planner.
Thank you, Counselor Murn. The applicant did bring in a detail showing what the sign would look like with opaque background, which is attached to the committee recommendation. It's the first page after the recommendation. And if council so wishes, I have a condition that would flow from that to work with the applicant.
Don't know what that means. Sorry, what are you, what are you asking for?
Basically, committee directed us to work with the applicant. We did, to achieve an option that would provide council with a, a condition that would provide for a sign with opaque background, so it would reduce light pollution at night.
Okay.
And the condition that could be attached to this, that council require that all signs in the freestanding sign structure be constructed with illuminated lettering and opaque backgrounds to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning.
Add that?
So do I just?
How, how do we handle that? How do we add that on to it? Do we want to do an amendment and vote on the amendment first? Okay.
Okay.
When do you want to move that amendment?
I'll move the amendment.
Okay, second. Okay, discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment? Thank, carried. Going back to the original motion, then. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to this item because I'm, I feel that I, I'm a bit torn. I certainly feel that I, I want to support businesses and their need to be seen in our community, but also feel that we're trying to treat everyone fairly. And we, we have an official community plan with specific recommendations in regard to signage, so that, you know, Colwood doesn't look like Giant Strip Mall, basically, when you drive down and everybody has, you know, giant signs. So I, I'm, I'm very much torn with, with the recommendation. And in this instance only, I'm going to support the sign going up because of the hill and the corner. And I want to be really, really clear that that's why I'm supporting it, and that it isn't open season on put up whatever giant-sized sign you feel like putting up in Colwood, because as much as I want businesses to succeed, and I try to patronize them and promote them, I don't want to do it to the detriment of the quality of environment in our city.
Thank you. Counselor Lukens?
Thank you, Your Worship. It was not a decision that I made lightly, and I did support it at the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting, simply because in conversations with our staff, we are trying to streamline the look there. We don't want to have big, huge signs, because that whole area is going to change. I actually like the design that they've come up with, maybe a little bit cleaner with lines, but I do like the look of it. Like Counselor Day, I do support businesses and economic development in Colwood. We just came up with an economic development strategy. We want to be able to retain business. It's a lot easier than trying to get them. These are longtime business owners in Colwood. They have tried over the years to do different things. We also need to remember, our signed bylaw has not been updated, I think, since the mid-eighties. I know it is something that staff are working on, and it will change and evolve. The OCP is a living document. I'm not looking for that to become a Vegas strip. Capital City Center will build up, so I think there will be some relative height variances within the area. And I think the sign will add and attract, I think, people to utilizing these businesses in Colwood.
Thank you, Counselor Cullington.
Thank you. For myself, I think it's important to, to support this application. It's a, a nice cluster of businesses. You guys have been there for a long time. It is a difficult site to get in and out of, particularly if it come on it suddenly. So I think the, you know, it's important that we do a good job of, of letting people know that, that those folks who are there, help them, help them get in and out. And I know the next thing you're going to ask is, what are we going to do about the parking on the other side of the road?
I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 7.1.2 Development Variants, DVP 14012, 300 Pickford Road.
Thank you, Your Worship. This application is requesting to vary Section 2.1.062B of the Land Use Bylaw number 151, increasing the maximum allowable total combined floor area of an accessory building from 60 meters squared to 76.4 meters squared, and Section 2.1.062C, decreasing minimum allowable side yard setback requirement for an accessory building from one meter to zero dot five meters, in order to facilitate the construction of a detached enclosed garage adjacent to the northern side lot line of the property. The applicant did tell us that they intend to rebuild the structure exactly the same place as the one that was destroyed by fire. They confirmed that they purchased the property approximately three years ago. The original non-conforming garage existed when they purchased the property. It was destroyed by fire in 2012, and that there was no use of substance related to the cause of the fire, and it will not be present in the rebuilt garage they have confirmed. There was a discussion at the meeting with Director of Planning that, and with the Chief Building Inspector, that 0.5 meter represents the location of the most exterior side of the building face, not including the eaves, and that drawings show a nominal overhang, eaves, but for the wall to be on the 0.5 mark would remove the overhang on that side, except for the area displaced by the gutter. And, and what they mean by that is, they will, as it's in the recommendation, they will be able to put a gutter on, which will, is the only piece that can hang over that 0.5. So just so we're clear on that. And that the 45-minute fire resistance rating is a code requirement because of the proximity of the structure to the property line. So it was recommended by committee and ISO move to council that the Development Variants Permit, number DVP 14012, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the maximum allowable total combined floor area of an accessory building on a lot within a residential zone pursuant to Section 2.1.062B of the Land Use Bylaw number 151, from 60.0 meters squared to 76.4 meters squared, and the minimum allowable setback, allowable side yard setback requirement for an accessory building pursuant to Section 2.1.062C of the Land Use Bylaw number 151, from one meter to 0.5 meters on the property described as Lot 2, Section 69, Esquimalt District Plan 11300, 3007, Pickford Road. Subject to construction of the proposed accessory building being in substantial compliance with the plans prepared by West Coast Design dated 0906, 2014, and attached to the staff report dated October 8, 2014, as Appendix 3, to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning. And notwithstanding the proposed plans, no portion of the proposed structure, including roofs and eaves, but excluding a typical metal extruded gutter, shall be located closer than 0.5 meters to the adjacent property boundary.
Second.
Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I attended the meeting that this was at, and I- I attended the meeting that this was at, and in reading the plans, I found it confusing because it would seem that you're allowing a gutter but not allowing an eve overhang. And that, just the way the report was written was very confusing because it said, will not absolutely whatever you say, hang over more than this, and then, oh, we went to committee and said, oh, yes, it does. And it will. So it didn't feel comfortable to see a report coming forward saying, there's no way this is going to be any closer than this, and then, oh, yes, it is. So is there to be any overhang of the roof whatsoever?
Yes, and I'll let the Director of Planning speak to it because there was a change after the report was made that he brought forward to the meeting, Councilor Day, so I'll let him speak to it.
Yeah. In preparation for the committee meeting, I spoke with the Chief Building Official about the condition that restricts the setback. And what the applicant is trying to do is to reposition a new structure on the existing foundation that was saved from the fire. So we thought in terms of allowing that to happen practically, we should soften the language to include a gutter.
So just to clarify, does that include a gutter and the overhang?
As we tried to explain in the recommendation, it's solely a typical metal gutter, so that would be a projection of only a couple inches.
Okay. So, yeah, I think that's unfortunate because I think overhangs are important to the health of a building, but I will live with your recommendation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And seven point one point three, we're postponing, correct? Okay.
Is, are you wanting to speak to it, Ian?
Or do you want to speak to it at all?
Certainly, I can provide.
Okay, hang on. So before you do, I'm going to declare a direct conflict as I reside at Ocean Grove, so I'm going to remove myself from the table at this time. Thank you.
Nope. Nope. Nope, I'm not giving them more than thirty seconds. Go!
Just wanted to add that staff is working towards bringing the recommendation and the clarification that committee asked for to the November tenth council meeting.
Thank you. Is that it? Is that all you wanted to say? Jeez. She couldn't stick around for that? That's silly. Yeah, I think that's... Okay. I'm with you. I'm participating like you wouldn't believe. My goal is for us to be done by eight-thirty, so that's why I'm hustling here. Do we have quorum without her? All right, so let's keep going. Seven point two point one, verbal report, Councilor Judith Covington regarding the Westside Sewer Committee.
Thank you. I'm doing this on behalf of the mayor who wasn't able to be here today, and I apologize. I had asked for, I got a copy of the updated terms of reference midway through this afternoon. I did email it to you. I had asked for a hard copy, but didn't quite connect on that one. So if anybody in the audience is interested, we can certainly make it available to you. So this is a good news story. This is something that Colwood has been working on, hello there. Something that Colwood's been working on for a long time and pushing, and the mayors from the Westside communities have been working, along with First Nations, have been working together for some time and pushing and saying, we want a Westside solution. And at the last Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee, that committee and the board supported the development of this Westside Select Committee. So last week was the inaugural meeting of this committee, and the kind of main item of business is to sort of say, what's our terms of reference? What's our project charter? What is this all about? So the terms of reference basically set out the structure of this Select Committee. It's a committee that reports through the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee to the CRD, so it is a creature of the CRD. And I suppose in some ways, it's not unlike the subcommittee that we had a number of years ago, when we had a Westside group, and Councilor Logan will remember that because he sat on it. The mandate of the committee, and I'm quoting, is to evaluate options and develop a conceptual plan for wastewater treatment and resource recovery plan for participating jurisdictions. The conceptual plan will optimize existing infrastructure where practical, be developed in a collaborative manner with the participants, be environmentally sound, decisions will be based on the best business case scenario that maximizes benefit to the best value for taxpayers, meet the unique needs of the Westside in a proactive and timely way, the process will be efficient and cost-effective, it will form the basis for an amendment to the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Plan, and finally, its purpose is to engage and consult with Westside residents. So it's set up so that there are one representative each from Colwood, Esquimalt, View Royal, and Songes Nation. There are two representatives from Langford, and that simply reflects the structure at Core Area Committee where Langford, because they're bigger, has two reps. Each of those people has an alternate. The alternates can participate in all the discussion but not vote. At this moment in time, the mayor is Colwood's representative. I'm the alternate. Obviously, that's not going to be for a long time, so anybody who's looking for a new job might want to kind of put their hand up for that one. And also just to note that Esquimalt Nation has also been invited to participate in the process throughout. At this moment in time, they've chosen not to, but, you know, the door is very much kind of always open to them. So this committee then is, or Select Committee, is supported by a team of staff from our various municipalities in Songes Nation, and there's kind of two groups. One is really more of a technical group, so the kind of, you know, the engineering in behind it, and one is a communications group with the kind of how we get the message out. And Michael is on the technical committee, Sandra, of course, is on the communications committee, so we're well represented on that. And one of the things those two groups are working on at the moment is working towards that engagement piece and kind of moving out ahead in terms of trying to get us to a point where we can do some open houses that provide public with, from all across the region, with an opportunity to kind of learn more about this whole sewage treatment process, what's the kind of the latest and greatest, and for them to provide feedback on what it is they want to see out of this process. Michael, did you want to talk anymore about that? Okay. Okay. So it's really just an information item to keep you guys in the loop. The terms of reference that we have are draft at the moment. It will go to Core Area Committee and then to the board. I think it's something like November the twelfth. So at that point, it will be finalized, but we're moving forward.
Great, thank you. Motion to receive?
To move.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. City Engineer, Westridge Landing Easement.
And I am going to remove myself from the table as I have a perceived conflict. As the developer was my financial agent during the last election, so I have removed myself from the table since it's come forward. Thank you.
Encouraged by the city and in accordance with the official community plan, the developer of Westridge Landing is building a strata rental apartment building and a hotel, and parts of the building overhang the Whale Road right away. The developer has asked that this encroachment on city property be made secure as possible by means of an easement registered on title. And because this is a disposition of an interest in land, it must be advertised to the general public, which did happen on Friday, October twenty-fourth, in the Times-Colonist, and Sunday, October twenty-sixth, in the Times-Colonist, in accordance with the requirements of the charter, I believe. And the next step is for council to meet in public tonight and consider whether to approve the disposal of the land interest as proposed. And the land interest we're talking about is an aerial easement, so I'll go through the terms of the easement later on, but there's no interest in the surface of the land that goes with the easement. The legal survey attached to the easement is very specifically aimed at the buildings that are being built. And the terms of the easement, as you will see, don't allow anything to be built on the surface of the land. So the city is not giving up a space that it needs for any other purpose. Once council has approved or decided not to approve the easement, then the easement is either registered or not registered. The size of the proposed encroachments is determined by the size of the canopies or awnings, and these awnings are mentioned in the official community plan as a desirable thing because they provide weather protection along sidewalks, which is really useful in commercial areas. And there are also balconies and flying buttresses and a bit of the roof projection, the projector of the road right away, but these are much less of a projection than the awnings, which are what define the dimensions of the encroachment. The legal implications of the decision in front of you are that council must not provide assistance to a private entity. Therefore, the city must get fair market value for the interest in the land. And this is not the same as the value of the land as fee simple, but is simply the value of the aerial space only, which would be considerably less than any interest ownership of the land. And the fair market value can be taken as goods or services in exchange, but there must normally be some currency exchange to establish a contract. Financial implications of the city for signing the easements is, there is no cost to the city, other than we had to pay for legal advice, as you have to in any transaction like this. But the documents were prepared by the developers' solicitors, and the registration of the documents would be taken care of by the developers' solicitors. And I'll just go through the main clauses in the easement because you haven't had that document very long. And so the idea of the easement is that the city grants to the grantee, which is the developer, or in the case of the hotel, the apartment building, it's actually to the The non-exclusive right to construct and maintain works upon and over those portions of the highway. So it says upon the highway, but that's just normal wording. The legal plan makes it very specific. It's only for the aerial. And the next clause says that the grantee acknowledges that they won't restrict the right of the city at any time to improve, maintain, widen, raise, lower, et cetera, to the highway, or to do any of the other lists of things that we would want to do with the highway, providing they can keep their aerial encroachment. And there are a number of covenants by the grantee, the property owner, which prevents them from interfering with the city's use of the highway or undertaking any construction or placement of any other structure or encroachment on the easement area, and that they have to keep the items that encroach in good repair at their own expense, and they can't do anything that would damage the highway. And the grantee has to pay the city at one time encroachment charge of ten dollars. The grantee is responsible for all cost payments, outlays, and expenses with respect to the engineering, survey, legal, construction, maintenance, repair, et cetera, et cetera, of the encroachment. And critically, starting in 2035, which is, you know, sort of halfway into the life of the building, and less often than every five years thereafter, the property owner is required to get a structural engineer's report, which says that all of these structures are still in good repair and safe, and this protects the city from the possibility of a lack of maintenance leading to a liability or a danger to the people on the sidewalk. City also has the right to inspect the work at any time, and either as a result of that inspection or one of the structural reports, the city engineer at the time, I don't think I'll be here in 2035, can determine that the grantee has failed to maintain the works and that there is in fact a hazard, and then there's conditions as to how that work must be repaired, and so that there's no financial risk to the city. And the rest of it is pretty much boilerplate except for the expiry, which is the, this agreement shall expire if the building to which the works are attached is removed. So if it's demolished, start again. Same thing could happen again, but it would be a completely new process for a new council to approve, or if it's more than seventy-five percent destroyed or substantially damaged, which is the usual condition, which would require a new building permit and a whole new process. And there is a requirement for insurance, which names the city as an additional named insured, no cancellation clause without notice, cross liability provision, et cetera, et cetera, to fully save the city harmless. And the recommendation is that council authorize the mayor and the CAO to sign the easements for both three twenty-eight and three eighteen Whale Road, and the documents that permit the developers' solicitors to register the easements on the appropriate portions of the Whale Road right away. Thank you.
To move. Thank you. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, moving on. Duke Earl, my lord, however you want to call me tonight. Seven point two point three, engineer, 2015, Senior Housing and Supportive Initiative. Are you speaking to that, or who's speaking to that?
Senior Housing Initiative? The planner's going to speak to this one.
Okay.
He knows a lot more about it than I do.
Apparently. So this is basically an opportunity for us to take advantage of funding from the province to undertake some supportive action for age-friendly communities. We do not currently have an age-friendly community plan, and the province is offering up to $20,000 for us to achieve that. In terms of the priorities set forth for council, this would not fit into those priorities already stated, but as I said, this is an opportunity to achieve funding. They're also providing funding for infrastructure upgrades, but only forty percent of those upgrades in terms of cost. So what staff is doing here is bringing the opportunity to council's attention, and we'd be looking to take that money and produce an age-friendly community plan that was based on successful models in the region, such as the municipality of Sanch has a very good age-friendly plan, and we think we could do that without significant impact on the other priorities that council has set forth for us. Thank you.
Motion, Councilor Day.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention that the user-friendly trail guide was done in partnership with Westshore Parks and Recreation and CRD Parks, was in part through accessing their...
I'd just like to mention that the user-friendly trail guide was done in partnership with West Shore Parks and Recreation and CRD Parks, was in part through accessing their healthy community senior friendly grant that they had, and pooling those resources. So the things that would work for seniors in our community are also the things that work for people with disabilities. They're very, they have similar goals to create better access and understanding in terms of what the barriers are in the community. So I would like to move that we apply for a grant up to $20,000 that does not require matching funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilor Collington?
Just a comment that I was looking at some future stuff on Colwood, and it was showing that the trend line was that, I think it was by about 2025, we were going to have more people in the over 65 category than we would in the under 15 category, which is not what we currently are. So since I'm probably going to be, well, I know I'm going to be in that category. I thoroughly support senior friendly initiatives. No, I think I'm going to have to buy a new bus to keep me moving around. But no, I think it is, I think it is important. I think, you know, we do, we do have an aging population, and I think there's lots of, you know, simple stuff, you know, the sidewalks that are not particularly friendly when you're a bit kind of wobbly on your legs or whatever. I think it's a, it's a good thing to keep an eye on, and I think it fits into some of our other planning activities, so.
We have a sidewalk somewhere?
Just wanted to add that we have also done quite a bit of work with a planning grant that we received on the active transportation map. So we do have a pretty good on-the-ground inventory to work with in terms of what's on the ground and where our priority areas might end up being. And 40% of the grant can be used for capital, so that would be a great place to start.
Great. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. You've got 38 seconds. 7.2, 7.3.1 memorandum regarding the administrative assistant three. Oh, we've already moved the emotive. Do you want to speak to it? Nope.
If you'd like me to. So basically, what this is, is bylaw 1531, which was the animal control bylaw, got adopted in July. And when we were processing it, we realized that another sewer bylaw was given the same number. So in order to clean that up, we need to change the animal control bylaw to be cited as bylaw 1533. And as well, the municipal ticket information bylaw contained the wrong information in it because of that bylaw, and has to be changed as well. Is that the quickest Coles note version of it?
Perfect. And we had Gordy moved it, excuse me, Councilor Logan moved it, and Councilor Collington seconded it. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. 8.1, bylaw number 1555, final reading?
Move final.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried. 1533, first reading?
Move introduction. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Move second.
Second, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Move third. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Bylaw 1556, first.
Move introduction. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.
Move second.
Second, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Carried. Third reading?
Second.
Third. All those in favor?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Carried.
8:30! Bam!
Go raw! Good job! Nice!
Yeah, I said 8:30. You owe me a beer! So let that be a lesson to you new counselors, that's how you run a meeting! I said you guys, yeah!